All right, we have 6 o'clock, so I'm gonna get this going. All righty, let's see here. So, good evening, everyone, welcome to July 14th City Council Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions under the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raise your hand button that you can tap or press to recognize to be recognized to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. So, in attendance, we have Councillor McCarthy, we have Councillor Le Blank, we have Councillor Peck, Councillor Gilman, Councillor Cox, Councillor Memhard, Councillor Holmgren, Councillor Nolan, and I don't see Councillor O'Hara. Is that... Jamie, are you calling in on the phone?
He said that he didn't get an invite, and I just let Joanne know.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll get him the phone number, I'll send him the optional phone number.
I'll announce him when he comes, but as it stands, we have those councillors in attendance. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
The next order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. So, oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks period relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints to individual performance. Is there anyone that would like to speak under oral communications? I see one. Okay, caller, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yep, my name is Craig Hamilton, I reside at 46 Grove Street. And I've called several times now on oral communication night. And I have not heard anything back from the city as far as what's going up or not going on here on Grove Street. As far as the road work, the schedule of Phase 2 of the sewer work that was supposed to be done in April, starting in April, they wrapped up the first phase in November last year, and they said, "See you in the spring." Well, here we are, July 14th, and nothing still. The road is still absolutely a disgrace out there. It's a hazard out there, the sidewalks are still a hazard out there. I'm fighting on tooth and nail with the city for every little thing that's going on and not going on here on Grove Street.
Okay, Craig, I have reached out to our DPW, I'm just waiting for a response back. I will personally give Mike a call in the morning, and I'll have something for you tomorrow, because I know I told you that I'd reach out to you as soon as I got something. I'm sure Mike has...
Exactly, so I mean, I'm being patient here, but it's just, you know, it's really, really a dire situation over here. I know, I know there's other stuff going on in other places, but Grove Street is an absolute hazard over here right now. There's cars are flying through here, there's a lot of foot traffic now with the coronavirus, a lot of families out here, out and about, and it's just really, it's a hazard out here, it's an absolute warning hazard out here. I actually reached out to Taylor Bradford this morning, she's a Times reporter, because the last time we had a meeting that I was part of was the 23rd of June, and on June 24th, there was an article in the paper about Trash Street. And Trash Street in the article says that they're getting new sidewalks and brand-new paving from curb to curb. So, and but I'm being told on my end with Jamie, I've talked to Jamie O'Hara a lot, that there's no budget. And I see Shepherd Street just got done a few months ago or something, and there's just nothing going on here. The sewer overflows all the time, and it's not for me calling Bill Gillis, and he's been really, really kind to me to get somebody out here to pump it out immediately because it is such a hazard having raw sewage running down the street. And that's only part of the problem, is the roadway is just absolute, and the sidewalks are just really, just really bad. And we're just really getting tired of it up here. We all have nice cars, and they're just taking a beating up here.
Okay.
So, whatever you can do, Steve, on your end, I really, really would appreciate it.
I'll get something for you tomorrow.
And like I said, I'll reach out to the Times to see if they can do an article to find out what's going on here on Grove Street. So, I'm being very patient, but it's just getting really dire over here as far as I'm concerned.
I know you are, bud, we appreciate it. I'll have something for you tomorrow.
Councillor Blank?
Yes, Vanessa, go ahead.
I actually went to Mr. Hamilton's house today to personally deliver the letter. You know, I take full responsibility for the delay and the response for his oral communications. You know, I had to talk with several city staff to, you know, get an idea, best information to respond. I'll put my business card in there, Mr. Hamilton, I'm the new interim CAO for the city with my cellphone. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get information that you're probably want to hear. You know, the road work is on GPW's radar, but nothing is planned right now. But you now have my contact information, and I encourage you to contact me after Labor Day, and I will personally get you an update on the status of the road work, as well as several other items that you addressed in previous oral communications. So, I took full responsibility for the delay, and you know, I'm sorry we weren't able to meet in person earlier.
Well, I appreciate that, and I haven't even checked my mailbox yet, so after I get done here, I will go out and check there and get my letter. But greatly appreciate it.
All right, Vanessa, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Before you hang up, Craig, feel free to join us anytime, bud, you're not being a pain. I know it's frustrating, I live off of Grove Street, so I understand completely what you're saying. But we will work with you to figure out what we're gonna do in the phases. So, just, you know, the city government runs a certain way, and you know, there are other things that, like you said earlier, come up about, but we will get information. As soon as we get any information, I'll be sure that you are the first one to get it.
I greatly, greatly appreciate that, Steve.
My pleasure, Craig, I appreciate it, thanks again.
All right, I'll talk to you guys soon, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, take care, stay safe.
All right, we have another caller. Caller, can you please identify yourself with your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Jeff Santos, and I live next door to Mr. Hamilton at 44 Grove Street.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Lifelong Gloucester resident, and essentially, I'm gonna piggyback off what Mr. Hamilton has stated. The roads are horrendous, it's been this way for too long, and it's getting very irritating. Cars are flying by there, the roads are decrepit. I have two brand-new 2020 vehicles, they're taking a beating. The roads look terrible, something needs to be done, I don't want excuses. I'm a taxpayer, I pay a lot in taxes. I need it done, the neighborhood needs it done. The sidewalks are a mess, people are walking, someone's gonna get hurt. I still have spray paint from five years ago where the gas lines are on the streets. I work nights, I worked federal law enforcement a few years ago, coming home, all I heard was NewCo banging on the streets, getting things done, the lines in the streets. And that's gone for nothing now. So, it's just been a nightmare overall. So, less excuses, more work done, please.
Jeff, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, pal, we'll get some information to you also. We have another person, Maria, could you please name an address for the record, please?
Mara, my name is Mara DeGagné.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mara, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I live at 152 East Main Street, and my concern, I was wondering whether I was gonna come up, I'm not used to this. My concern is the masks, and I may be talking about something that's on the agenda, I'm not sure, I didn't read the agenda, but the people that are not wearing masks, the beaches were jam-packed, elbow to elbow, like spring break, in all of the beaches. They were out of town with state cars at Niles. There was no parking, there's no enforcement for the rules that you guys are making. You couldn't even get to Good Harbor Beach on the bridge without touching somebody. It was incredible, it was totally incredible. And somebody said, "Well, it was okay on the beach." I think, I mean, I couldn't even get on the beach to take a picture of it. I took a terrible picture from the street, but there was, the cars were lined up, and it seems like there's no enforcement about wearing masks. I know in California, they're handing out $10,000 fines because their numbers went up. The numbers went way down, and they went up. With all these new people coming in, I know that Jim's store, Variety Store, and I don't know if you've heard this, they had to close at 1:45 because it was no place for their people to park, so they could have a store. So, we're having our, they're coming in, it's like cockroaches, they're absolutely everywhere. Although, they don't park where the barriers are, they park everywhere else, in people's driveways, in the laundromat, they're coming in using that bathroom without masks on. The owner of the laundromat said something to some lady, and she says, "Go ahead, call the police on me." There was no cop around for any of this. Is there any plans on enforcing any of these rules?
I, yes, we have a plan in place that is gonna be activated soon. I can't give you all the details because that's an administrative duty, but there are plans in the works. I just want to give you reassurance. All the city council has been working with the mayor's office to try to alleviate all of these, so we understand.
What is it with the parking? Because I can't even park at Niles Beach being a resident and a senior citizen. Why can't we keep at least out-of-state cars there? People from Florida without masks on, Texas, I've seen both of those cars there.
So, normally, we don't debate back and forth during oral communications, but I just want to give you a quick instance, because I know this isn't an atypical thing that we normally do, so you gotta remember that. And I'm not defending the residents, and I'm not defending everything that's going on, because I understand, but typically, we have people bringing their kids to baseball games, baseball practice, soccer game, soccer practice, you know, and other things that they normally do. Well, right now, not everybody's allowed to attend these things, so they're trying to find other things to do with their family and their kids. You know, and I'm not saying that it's right for everybody to come to Gloucester, but that's just my perspective on why things are just so crazy lately.
Well, excuse me for just a minute, but if you look, our numbers are already up, and that hasn't even been two weeks of this vacation. You know what's gonna happen, right?
I do, yeah. Like I said, we normally don't debate this during the oral communications.
Okay, sorry.
But no, but we will get some information to you, and we'll get it back as soon as possible. Usually, within a couple of weeks, we'll have something before you for the...
I'm sorry, you know, it's so different when it's at the city hall than when we're doing Zoom. I feel like I'm in my living room.
I agree.
I think the other part to remember is that the money coming into the state as far as kids going to school, if the numbers go up, we can't send kids to school. So, and the schools closed down again.
Where do you live, what ward do you live in?
I live at 152 East Main Street.
Okay, so you're over in Ward 1, so we'll get some information out to you. If you want to give your city councillor Scott, shoot him a quick email or a phone call, I'm sure he'll be happy to correspond back and forth on what we're doing in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? Okay, we have a caller. Hold on one second, can you identify, name and address for the record, please?
Actually, Steve, this is still Craig, I'm just listening, I got unmuted again.
All right, let me lower your hand, Mara, let me lower your hand. I think, oh, let's see here, let me lower this hand. I think we've got everybody, okay. I think we've got everybody for oral communications.
Excuse me, there is, okay, I'm sorry, I just saw a hand, but now it's low.
Yeah, I typically lower hands as we listen to them, I didn't do it.
Okay.
25 million things are going on. Okay, so that's it for oral communications, thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is a presentation from Karen Carroll, Public Health Director, regarding the update on COVID-19 and other related matters.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. How you doing, Carol?
Good, hi.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, good evening, councillors and mayor, nice to see you all.
Nice to see you also.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for the time tonight, and I will try to be a little bit brief. There's a lot to this issue, as you know. And I'll give you a quick update, kind of where we are now, and then I'll highlight some of the key areas of concern or gaps or issues that we're really working right now to try to address. And then I'll kind of give you our projection and our plans for the next six months, best we can gaze into the future and anticipate where this will go. So, I'd like to start with the good news that right now, we're seeing very little community transmission here in Gloucester or on Cape Ann, and that's pretty much echoed throughout Massachusetts as well. So, the numbers are very good, we have three of our Massachusetts indicators in the green, which means progress ahead. That's allowed us to open up and head into our Phase 3 last week. So, we're now at the point where all businesses pretty much have been allowed to open. There's a few things still prohibited until Phase 4. So, back to Gloucester, we have unfortunately had 26 deaths to date. And, but at the moment, as I said, we have less than five active cases. So, this is very good news. What we are experiencing is that when we do have an active case, there are a lot more contacts for that person because we're all out and about, moving around more. So, if we have a case, there's a lot more contact tracing that needs to happen there. But we have, our nursing team is still in place from the spring. Most of those are school nurses and a couple of contract nurses as well. In terms of the testing, the positive test rate, even after the many of the protests and outdoor events that were held a few weeks back and Memorial Day weekend, there was some test pre-testing that was provided to anyone who participated in a protest of any sort, and the positive test rate came back was very low after that testing as well. So, again, all good indicators and suggesting that there is very little community transmission right now, which means it is safe to go ahead with the reopening of activities. And we hope it stays that way because that's what will allow us to safely open our schools. In general, I feel the compliance with businesses as well as the community has been outstanding. The city has put a lot of effort into supporting our business through the mayor's office, through our reopening committee, in which many of you and people from the public are a part of. It's been a great effort, and we've been able to really help businesses get open and solve some of their own issues around reopening. We do get complaints daily, hourly, all of us do, I'm sure you do. Sometimes they're more like concerns, that's important, it's good for us to hear. Our first reaction and our second and our third, if we get there, is an educational approach. So, we are not fining, we are not going out and closing people down, but we are not ignoring it either. If I'm riding to work and I see a line or a major violation, we're gonna reach out to that business, and we encourage the public to let us know, and we just have a conversation with them, how can we support you? Do you know the checklist, do you have your checklist done? Do you have questions about how we could support you in keeping your business safe and therefore staying open? We have a number of inspectors throughout the city that assist with that, so depending on if it's a restaurant, if it's someone with a liquor license issue, if it's boats, if it's whatever, we'll use our city staff to help reach out and answer questions. And just to kind of keep reminding people, this is all new to everyone, including our city offices are having to go through these checklists and figure it all out. So, but in general, I think people have taken it really seriously, and the compliance has been very good. Most, all of the businesses have now safely reopened in Phase 3. There is a kind of Part 2 to Phase 3, so there'll be a few more things coming, but largely, I think we've got most of them opened up at this point at some capacity, some limited capacity. So, having said all that good news, as the mayor likes to remind us, COVID doesn't take a summer vacation. So, we can't either with our planning and our thinking on this. That's not to say we're not enjoying some of this summer and this a little bit quieter time. We encourage people who are working on our task force and working on this issue, really, everyone has been impacted by COVID in some way, whether you've got kids home, or you're worried about them, or elderly parents, or you have medical issues, or you've been affected financially. We expect all of these issues to continue, we are concerned about all of them, but we hope that people are finding a little respite right now and a little bit of time to regroup and enjoy some of the things they love to do that feel a little more normal and be outside. And that is by far the safest place, is the outdoor activity. So, that also helps keep our numbers low in these summer months. So, the key issues that we are really focusing our planning on right now, it's not a rest for us, and it won't be until we have this really under control. So, you know, if my department is slow to get back to you on something, just stay with us, we're there, but we are really trying to plan for the next things. The issues that we remain very concerned about are testing. It still can be very slow depending on where the lab, where the specimen ends up, and it can be just very random. Sometimes we see a pattern, and sometimes it's just randomly takes six days to get a lab test back. That's obviously not going to be conducive to keeping cities and schools open. So, we want to see those faster, we want to see more of them. We want to see accessibility on Cape Ann, so ideally, we'd like to see a site in Gloucester that's doing testing and doing, you know, large amounts of testing. So, we currently have a task force that the mayor has helped us set up with some of our healthcare providers, some of our private pharmaceutical industries, and we're in the area, and we're trying to find a way in which we can increase the amount of testing we can do here on Cape Ann. The other main goal that we are concerned about or issue is the length of time that it takes from an exposure or a person developing a symptom to getting that person isolated, and that can be in any setting, but we've actually started tracking that number, and maybe the next time I come, I'll report on that. It's a little bit more complicated because we have to go through the data a little more manually, but we do have the ability to track it. We can see when someone was first exposed, whether they were a contact who was told to quarantine because they had an exposure, or whether they were an index case, someone who had symptoms. We want to understand how long it takes from the symptom or the exposure to the time we get that person away from other people or isolated or quarantined in the case of a contact. So, right now, again, it's taking longer than we want because of that testing delay and also because of educational issues. People need to understand the symptoms, they need to recognize that, jeez, this might be a COVID symptom. They need to act quickly, and they need to feel safe to let their manager know they won't be coming in. They need to reach out to their physician and request testing. Or if they are contacted as a contact, they need to, you know, move on that quickly, and then we need those test results to come back quickly. And then we need our contact tracing team is the final step of calling people and getting them isolated. But I have to say, we have that down to less than 24 hours. So, unless we simply are unable to find or contact the person. But we will, even if a phone number doesn't work, we will deliver a letter within 24 hours asking that person to isolate or quarantine. So, that time period, the work needs to be done on things that are really hard and beyond our control, but we're really dedicated to getting that timeframe down because that's what will keep our city open, that's what will keep our businesses and our schools. So, and part of that's a cultural shift, just educating people that they will get paid and they will be supported if they say they think they have a little sore throat, they're not sure what it is, but they're gonna err on the side of caution and work from home today. So, that's a big challenge that we're continuing to work on. Obviously, the schools, opening up the schools, we have a new superintendent who's already reached out to us and spent some time planning with us. We intend to fully support the schools in getting these kids back as much as possible on-site, and that's, you know, a goal of the state as well. It's also a goal in terms of reopening our community and our businesses. We can't do that until we arrange childcare, we get schools open, all of those things. So, schools definitely take a priority, and we're excited to partner with them and some of the new folks on board in the school community. The homeless situation continues to also be a significant issue where we anticipate exceeding our capacity locally very, very soon. We've had to depopulate our shelter in order to comply with the COVID regulations of social distancing, and that's left us in a spot where we don't have a plan for the first snowstorm or even as more people are affected financially by this disease and lose jobs and lose homes. So, we're really worried about that. The mayor and Peggy Hegarty-Stek and folks working in this field have partnered, we've had several meetings, we're trying to work with the state as well. We're looking at regional solutions and hoping that there are some and that this doesn't fall to us locally to solve as well. It's a challenge, and it's one of our most vulnerable populations. We are also, I mean, the other gap is just general compliance that will get more and more important all of the time for face covering, basic hygiene, staying home when you're sick, and the six feet, it's social distancing. Again, I feel like the face coverings, it's a challenge. We also run into, as the caller mentioned, issues where people do not wear a face covering, and the best you can do is just ask them why, and if they state it's for a medical reason, you cannot ask any more questions, you cannot deny them access to your business, but you can require that they stay six feet from other people in the shop or the restaurant, and you can offer reasonable accommodation. And we found our businesses have been really good at working with people who come in who, for medical reasons, are unable to wear a face covering. So, we'll continue to work with people on that. We have a fabulous campaign going on with our youth commission that hopefully you'll see soon, and they have designed fashion posters of youth wearing these beautiful masks that correspond with their very, you know, fashionable outfits. So, we're excited about that, and you know, all those things will help to normalize it. And again, it's the inside transmission is where we're most concerned. Oh, and the mayor has just got in an order for us, and we're really excited to get these so we can be wearing them, they're not bandanas, I forget what you call them.
Gators.
Gators, that's right, they're gators, and then we have masks that say the city of Gloucester. So, that's great to, again, outdoors, if people can maintain the social distance, we're really not so concerned about someone taking their face mask, their face covering off. If they're on the beach and they're with their family on their blanket or they're staying six feet away, there's very little transmission that happens outdoors. It's really just on those points of access where people might be going to a snack bar or might be standing in line at a bathroom, and they're really close together. Those are the times in which we are concerned. And obviously, if parks or beaches get to the point where people can't set up six feet away from others, then that is a concern. But, you know, mostly outdoors, people are able to spread out, and very little transmission, again, happens there. So, moving forward to the next six months, look at that, looks fabulous, mayor, thank you. Yep, and all the staff should have those soon, so that's great. For the next six months, looking at a number of initiatives, and there's a lot more detail that I can provide, but I'll give you the high level for now, where we think we need to go. So, unfortunately, I don't anticipate this problem will go away. this problem will go away. We're fully expecting a second wave in the winter months. Um, maybe sooner, depending on how much movement and community transmission starts happening here in um Massachusetts and on the North Shore. So um, you know, we're we're just cautiously optimistic, hoping we can at least get things open, get the schools going, uh, keep businesses opening. And the more we encourage and wear face coverings and take precautions, um, the better chance we'll have at that. And again, let's not worry about a few people who might not be able to comply or choose not to comply. Just focus on if we get the majority of us wearing a face covering, the majority of the time, we're gonna be good. The studies show over and over again that if you have forty to sixty percent of your population, you significantly slow transmission down. So focus on that, the things that we can do. Um, there are people that cannot wear face coverings. There are times people forget or whatever, or, you know, come upon someone and all of a sudden they're within six feet. So if we can just focus on doing it as much of the time as we can, get in the habit of it, all those things. Um, that will help slow the transmission down in our community for everyone. Um, so moving forward to the next six months, we will have the contact tracing team. We will leave in place. It's um moving feast depending on what happens with schools and um when they are needed to back in the schools. But we do have um some contract nursing positions and other folks who will continue on with us. The state has um downsized its contact tracing team, but it is still there and available if we needed it. So that will be our fallback. Um, it's it's a good program, but it's not it it's not our nurses who know the community, who take the time. They have that extra time and who are also able to connect people with local resources. So that's one of the reasons that we've we've wanted from day one um to have our own contact tracing team and to continue that into the fall. So we're looking now to build that team up with the assumption that some of our nurses will go back to school in the fall. Um, we've also created a role of a cluster or business liaison nurse. And that nurse is available and has been working the last few weeks with businesses or clusters, um wherever they come up in agencies and a cluster is defined as one or more case. So as they come up in businesses or a scare or even just uh businesses have questions, we're able to have Janet reach out and spend time with them, do some extra training um and help connect them with whatever they need. So that has been um a great partnership. And if the nurse needs help with a from a food inspector or another type of inspector, she'll bring them in on the team as well, working with the business to keep them safely reopened. Um, we have a wraparound coordinator who will continue to provide extra services and resources, food, medication as needed. Um, and we're looking to fund a testing nurse as well whose position will be to continue the congregate, high-risk test testing that we were able to do all spring and summer. Uh, that will be ending with the community health centers will no longer be able to do that as they reopen. But we feel it's really critical to keeping our homeless shelter open and safe. And we'd like to extend that to some of our high-risk um senior housing and um possibly some other environments, some other high-risk communities. So we're looking to put a nurse on who will be trained and fit tested just to do testing and then follow up the education that goes with that, the the other supports that might be needed by people um that are getting tested, whether they're positive or negative. Um, the other thing we have are about to start is um we're going to be sampling our wastewater and we'll be monitoring it with Biobot, which is a company that does this throughout the United States. They predominantly moderate um monitor wastewater for opiates and they they use that to as an indicator for communities to understand what's happening in their community around that. But you can also use it to detect COVID. So as we know, COVID is shed in feces. This the virus sheds from about two days before someone becomes symptomatic. So it's another tool in our toolbox to know really quickly if we start to see those numbers climb in the wastewater, we'll know that something's happening in the community and we can we can ramp up our messaging. I mean, it just gives us more time to say we're seeing a trend here. We're seeing a little more community-wide um virus. So um, we're excited to be working with Biobot. And again, I'll provide you with some of the reports. They'll provide us with a weekly report. They'll kind of put put the data in context, compare it to others and our own baseline. Um, we'll also be upping our flu COVID uh vaccine and prevention. So those two things are going to be very intertwined. We'll have three nurses that we're recruiting who will work solely on flu vaccination clinics. Um, which eventually, six months from now, hopefully, will be a COVID vaccination clinic as well. Um, but they will be looking at some drive-through models and door-to-door vaccination models. These are two models that are totally new to us. Um, but they have been done elsewhere in the state. We're we're reaching out to our colleagues in other communities. Uh, we're going to attend a drive-through uh vaccination clinic so that we can get, you know, a sense of how that will work, how that could work in Gloucester. Um, and again, you know, the flu is similar, is some of the same symptoms. It will appear the same. It will appear at the same time as COVID. And the precautions are the same as well. So if we can get people really thinking about flu prevention, which is vaccine as well as hand washing and staying home when you're sick, that will also reduce the spread of COVID. So we'll be doing a lot of messaging to the community about um those two winter viruses and um, you know, to kind of, it's the same planning. You've got to you got to think, can I afford to be out for a week with COVID or the flu? What will I do? How will my business run? How will my family run? Um, so a lot of those planning and prevention efforts will be the same. So we're excited about some of those new initiatives and I will keep you updated how they're going. Um, and the final thing we'll be doing is some COVID care kits, thanks to a generous donation from Amazon as well as some CARES Act funding. We'll be putting together kits for senior citizens and other high-risk members of the community. And they'll have some basic prevention gloves, face coverings, hand sanitizer, information. Um, just to let people know that we're concerned about them as a gentle reminder to to take precautions to protect themselves. Um, so I'm I've talked a lot and sorry about that, but I just feel it's it's important and I so appreciate the opportunity to share some of the work that we're doing so that you know and can help us spread the word with your um constituents as well. Um, and if you have questions or concerns, please let us know.
Thank you, Karen. There are any council questions? Uh, Belle, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Karen. You're doing so much. It's totally appreciated. I had a um kind of a process question that could be answered by either Vanessa or by you. Recently read in the last few days about a non-compliance business number, two eleven COVID nineteen hotline. When members of the public feel like there's been a business that's non-compliant, um, they call and leave a message. Um, my question to city staff is, how will that information hotline that is being tracked at the state level be brought back to the city in terms of enforcement? So.
Uh, they have my email and Mac Shanks. Uh, we had to sort of tell them today who those should come to. And they'll come back to us in the Health Department. Um, there is a Department of Labor Standards hotline that the health departments can access if we need help with enforcement. Um, but our take has been to work with our local businesses, vendors, community and try to try to help support them and resolve it before bringing the state in. Um, you know, I think unless I'm wrong, I mean, this is all new, this complaint line, and Vanessa may know more, but I think basically they'll keep track of it at the state to kind of monitor where issues and where local boards of health are are having problems and communities. But I think they'll they'll be communicating it back to us to do what we do all the time, which is, again, to reach out to wherever the complaint is aimed at. Um, tease out what all the issues are in the complaint, you know, what people are are worried about and what we can address and what we can't. And um, you know, talk with whatever business is involved. So I I imagine that's how it will continue. Vanessa, are you? I don't think there's any army or people helping.
No, that's my understanding too, is that they'll refer everything back to the local board of health. Um, they'll work with the local board of health once they get the uh complaint. Um, they'll do like their due diligence and within seventy-two hours, if they think an investigation needs to happen, you know, they'll they'll loop in the local municipality. So, you know, together, you know, we'll work to rectify any issues and and address any concerns that come in.
We we do have a lot of resources available to us from the state. So, you know, we have twice-weekly calls with the state. Um, and i- if things come up, we have epidemiologists who are we have access to. Um, we have a lot of, they've been great and and uh we rely on them a lot for information or help researching things or whatever. And we can reach out to them for help with uh an enforcement problem or issue if we really needed to, but um we haven't.
Counselor, Counselor Holmgren?
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much, Karen. Thank you to the the entire Health Department. I am absolutely thrilled and so impressed with everything that you have done. And I just want to know how else we can help you as a council.
Um, wow, that's a great question. Thank you. Um, it's, you know, nice to acknowledge the team. The team is working really hard. And um, you know, I think your support has been has been great to us. Uh, our Board of Health is very, very committed and very active as well. Um, so, you know, I don't know if you have much to do with them, but um, they are, you know, they've been a tremendous support to us as as well as um the mayor's office and our colleagues. Um, in terms of what you can do, I think with messaging, I think we need your help to get the message out and then get it back to us. Um, and again, the message of, you know, let's focus on what people are doing well and not so much what they're not doing or a few people aren't doing or don't want to do. It it's okay. Give people a wide berth. We say that all the time because this thing has really tested a lot of our patients. And um, you know, it's it's really, people are tired and um people have been asked to do things that, you know, we've never had to do. And and um, so I think, you know, we go by that in our office that we just try to give people a wide berth for whatever they're experiencing, hear them out. And then as we hear common themes come through from your constituents, we'll try to address it in, you know, maybe the mayor and I will get on sixteen twenty-three or we do a press release, you know, Vanessa's always getting messages out in Facebook. And so we try to go where our trouble spots are, what we hear people worrying about. Um, we also really try to stay focused in our department on, and and this we can use your help too, focusing people on the high-risk areas that, again, um, there's not a lot of transmission that happens outside. So I know people look outside and they see lots of people and that's scary. But if people are are being mindful when they come in for dinner in our restaurants or they come inside to bathrooms or those kinds of places and wearing face coverings, then then that's a good thing. And and, you know, um, so I think that's probably the main thing. It's just helping us with the that communication to your constituents um to continue to do the right thing, thank them for doing the right thing. And it will really benefit us all. Um, it's it it's what we need to do to keep these schools open. I'm excited to open schools. I have two children of my own. We need these schools open. I think um, I think it will be good and they can do that. And there's more and more research too from that's coming out, you know, very recently, that there's little transmission that happens from children to adults. There is some, but it they're not these like super-spreaders we thought they were initially. So, you know, the the new superintendent, we're looking at these guidelines. The state is is looking at the research and you know, really making decisions based on science, priority, who's highest risk. Um, and also we have tools in our toolbox toolbox that we didn't have six months ago. So we have some medications. We have early warning. We know more about the symptoms. Um, so we have a few more tricks up our sleeve. We still don't have great, you know, rapid testing. We need that. Um, but we have some testing. We have more than we did six months ago and.
Thank you so much.
All right. Do we have any other, any other council questions?
Steve.
Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Karen, again. Um, do you, does the city have any um inspectors out Thursday, Friday, Saturday, late afternoon evenings going into the establishments? Because that's that's obviously, as you heard from some of the some of the uh oral communication uh people this evening. You know, the and I actually heard it from one restaurant owner that's extremely thankful that Governor Baker are allowed the restaurants to open, but they're fearful that if the governor's orders on social distancing, masks, uh gloves for employees and so on and so forth on it here too, that there will be a spike that ultimately could reverse the present status. And, you know, this restaurant owner said that would ultimately put them out of business forever. So the question is, does the city have inspectors out Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings? Um, you know, going to these establishments, making sure everything's being adhered to. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I think they're right. I mean, that's what we're afraid of too, that if we don't comply with these basic safety things that we know prevents the transmission, um, then we will have to close things back up like some of our other states have had to do. And that is absolutely the last thing we want for everyone's sake. Um, so in terms of inspectors, I'm assuming you mean like a food inspector or something for restaurants. We will go where the complaints are. So, you know, our inspectors work city hours, but all of us are on call all the time, as well as the police. There's been a couple of weekends where I've asked the police to check something out as I got a complaint on the weekend and they're able, if they have time, they're able to drive by, check it out, talk with the store manager, whatever the issue is. So we go when we're needed. Um, if we were to get a a concern or something was happening on a weekend, we absolutely would be there. And and sometimes it's max or I, um, but usually our inspectors are available and it's part of their job description to go out. Um, having said that, we don't, we're not doing any routine inspections for people to open for COVID. So we gave them the checklist. We told them what they needed to do. We did lots of trainings. And then we said, you know, good luck. Call us if you need us. And then we, if it's only if we get complaints, um, do we, and other towns are doing the same thing. This is kind of a statewide thing. So only if a complaint comes in, then we follow up and we do either an inspection um or we do um just, you know, a phone call or a Zoom call and and talk to them about the complaint. But we are following up on every complaint with every business because we think right now while we have time, it's a good touch point. It's a good way to establish a relationship. Um, we're trying to get our nurses talking with as many businesses and agencies as we can so that should they have an outbreak or a cluster in their business, they know Janet, they know Sylvia. They feel comfortable talking to us. They feel comfortable referring their their staff members to us and that we're not going to close them down. We're just, we're going to try to work with them, but we are going to make sure their employees are safe and um, we do what we need to do. So, yeah, I mean, at this point, I hope that answers your question. I mean, we don't have people scheduled on Friday night. But if there are major concerns and like any time with food, um, we will go and check it out and do what we need to do.
Thank you, Karen. Um, Councilor Nolan, I mean, our Councilor Harris, answer your question?
Yes, yep. Thank you very much.
Are there any other council questions? All right, seeing none. Karen, thank you. Uh, keep up the good work. We appreciate what you and your staff and the mayor's staff is doing. Hopefully, people adhere to these rules and uh we have, we will overcome this, maybe have a uh zero will overcome this, maybe have a, uh, zero, um, active cases and zero deaths over the next couple of months would be outstanding. Um, I know that we spoke about this before and it starts with each and every one of us personally protecting ourselves. If, uh, that's, that's where it starts. So please just keep adhering to the rules and procedures that are being put out there for us. And it starts at home. So teach your kids, educate your friends, educate your children, and, uh, hopefully it'll, it'll grow from that. So, but thank you, Karen. Um, you guys are doing great. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you, counselors.
All righty, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the consent agenda and unanimous consent calendar.
All righty, uh, is there any council that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded. I will call the roll call. Counselor LeBlanc, yes? Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pet?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yeah.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
The, uh, motion to accept the unanimous, uh, the unanimous, the consent agenda as is passes on a roll call vote of nine to nothing. We also have a unanimous consent agenda. Was, is there anybody who would like to remove anything from the unanimous consent agenda? All right, I will call the roll. Counselor LeBlanc, yes? Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pet?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
We didn't move or second it, but yeah.
All right, I'm sorry.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Second. All right, we'll start over again now.
Yes.
Uh, but we'll start, we'll start over with the consent agenda, unanimous consent agenda, just to make sure it's right. So it's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Counselor Cox. Uh, Counselor LeBlanc, yes? Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Still yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pet?
Vote early, vote often, yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yeah.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, unanimous consent agenda passes on a motion, uh, nine in favor, zero opposed. Uh, thank you, Counselor Cox. Uh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The budget and finance standing committee report of July 9th.
Counselor Cox.
Um, so I presented the city council with a unanimous consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like to pull anything from that consent agenda? Seeing none. Um, I moved the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, Counselor Cox, you'd like me to call the roll?
Uh, yes, please.
All righty, Counselor LeBlanc, yes? Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pet?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
The budget and finance unanimous consent agenda passes on a roll call vote, nine in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is the ordinance and administration standing committee report of June 15th.
All righty, uh, before we get the, this going, uh, we have Sarah Velnick on. Sarah, can you hear me? Hello, Sarah.
Needs to make herself active.
See her there. Hold on one second. Analyst, let's see if I can get her, uh, Sarah on mute. I can't get her on mute. Um, all right. So before we do this, um, we have our DPW, uh, one, somebody from the DPW, Rose La Piccolo. Rose, can you hear me? Hello, Rose. Rose, are you there? Rose La Piccolo. I have you on unmute so you can just talk. Maybe not. Hello, Rose. Hello, Sarah.
Somebody keeps muting her.
Now.
Okay, now she's unmuted.
Rose, we can, you're off of mute. If you talk, we could probably hear you. I'm not hearing.
I'm not. Hello, sorry about that. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of Sarah. Um, sorry about that.
Okay, can you, can you, uh, have your name and rec, name and address for the record? So we know who you are.
Yep, uh, Tom Lado, 29 Old Salem Road.
Okay, Tom. Um, so Sarah was required to get a couple of things. So she was required to get a sign, uh, her, uh, Division of Marine Fisheries permit, which we know she got that. Uh, she was supposed to get a sign off from Conservation Commission and a sign off from the DPW. So do you know if she has all three?
Uh, she emailed R.L. Piccolo to get a scientific permit application and she's waiting to hear back.
All right, from Rose.
Pete, the Shellfish Warden, said that, um, he spoke to the Conservation Commission, but was waiting to hear back from them still.
Okay, so she doesn't have her comm con sign off.
Sign off, correct.
Okay. Um, unfortunately, we require these things before we vote her forward. Um, so we're going to have to postpone her for another two weeks. I hate to do this because I know she's got some valuable things that she needs to do for the city. Um, but we've had several, uh, we've had a couple of other people come before us. Our, our GMGI, which is down next to Steve Conley, which is a, uh, accredited scientific research com, um, facility, has had to do the same thing. We've had Eric Majors from Seaside Sustainability has had to do the same thing. Um, so we're not trying to skirt anything by moving her forward in hopes that she gets all the sign offs. So, um, could you let Sarah know that, um, I spoke to Rose earlier and she is aware that she's trying to get these sign offs? So as soon as she gets them, that she can email me or the city clerk, letting us know that she has these sign offs?
Perfect. I will, we'll do. I'll, I'll let her know.
All right. I'm sorry to keep you waiting, but, um, we, 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 we make other people jump through these hoops and we just want to keep it consistent. So we know, we know she's going to do great things for the city and we're looking forward to working for her, but there are a couple of small, minor things that we need to have done before we, we permit her.
Understood. Appreciate your diligence. Thank you.
All right, we appreciate it. So Joanne, can we continue this till the next council meeting, please?
Yes, till July 28th.
Yes. All right. Uh, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is, um, there was no meeting on the ordinance administration on July 6th. The next order of business is the planning and development standing committee of July 8th and the special planning and development committee, uh, meeting of July 13th.
Counselor Gilman. Val, you there?
Yes.
All right, there you go. Thank you.
So, planning and development, July 8th.
So that would be the, uh,
That was. For the, um, so do you want me to, um, to present that motion right now for what we discussed for, on that meeting?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. So.
Well, you have a, um, well, you have a motion. You have the motion or do you want me to send it to you?
No, I've got it.
Okay, so if you read the motion.
Steve?
Oh, go ahead, Joanne.
That, that would be under the, uh, public hearing on the zoning.
Oh.
The motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm skipping, I'm, I'm a little bit ahead on.
We're doing the standing committee report still?
Yeah, yeah, standing committee reports.
Okay, and so the standing report, um, has no items to report from July 8th.
Okay, great. Uh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Um, excuse me, Counselor Gilman, do you have anything to report from the, um, special meeting July 13th on P and D?
Um, I do. Would you like me to, um, to summarize what was discussed last night?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so I think everyone knows that, um, for any type of street closure, P and D, um, approves it. And, um, we had a motion, three in favor, zero opposed, to support the special event permit application, request to hold the shop dine and stroll formerly glass of block party to be held on July 18th, 2020. Um, I will, um, just summarize what the motion was because I think it's applicable to everybody here.
Yes.
It was unanimous by roll call to approve a special events permit to the Cape and Chamber of Commerce hold the shop stroll and dine event on Saturday, July 18th, 2020, between the hours of five and nine, with closures from five to 10 of Main Street from Pleasant Street to the West End inside street closures, including Hancock, Short, Center and Porter Streets. Um, and then we have, um, following conditions, which we could probably just, um, send that to, um, to counselors or they could read the minutes, which have just been approved.
That's fine. We, we, uh, we get it. Um, all right, is that all, Counselor Gilman?
Um, yeah, we had a rigorous conversation in our meeting and, um, we talked about ways to help support the Chamber of Commerce and our community development, um, and, um, team. And we feel comfortable with what was in front of us and, um, we're looking forward, we're going to have, um, several stands, um, or tables that, um, people are giving out. Um, for those who don't have a face mask, they'll be available, um, some basic rules of things like where the bathrooms are. Um, just assistance with the event in general. So that was something that was important and, um, obviously where the toilets are and any type of questions. So we felt that that was, um, well-covered and, um, I think the minutes will describe that if you read everything.
Thank you, Counselor Gilman. So I just want to speak on that briefly. And I, I'm just one city counselor, but I think something like this, if we get this in before our next, well, before our council meeting, I think a closure like this should come before the full city council for discussion. Um, I think that, at least during this pandemic, because I think that people congregating, especially where we just heard earlier from Mara, that we're in the, uh, uptick on COVID-19 cases that, uh, people congregating in a downtown area, you know, this isn't a road closure for a, uh, road race where people can spread out. You know, this is a pretty congested area downtown. So, um, I, I, I would like the next sip and stroll and whatever it's called to maybe come before the next city council so we can have a full discussion. Um, I know that we've given the purview to the planning and development committee, but I think something like this, just, just during this pandemic, that we have a full council discussion on this to, to vet it before everybody. And like I said, I'm just one city counselor, um, but I, I think we all would feel more comfortable having to go forward with the full council though. Um, so maybe at the next, if this comes up again, Counselor, during this pandemic, maybe you could bounce this up to the full council meeting for us.
Be happy to. I was just following our rules of procedure.
No, I completely understand.
I think for COVID, I think it's absolutely, um, a, a valid.
Yes, request, that's all.
And there could be ward counselors there that would want to weigh in and, you know, and, and all the at-large counselors. So.
We appreciate it.
That's a, a good, um, suggestion.
Thank you. Um, so do, uh, during, so do we have any council questions for this? Uh, Counselor Cox?
Um, yes, I completely support that. Um, it, I was told that it was going to come before council. Um, it was just a misunderstanding of, um, procedure. And unfortunately I was not able to get it on the meeting last night and I would have vehemently opposed such an event with an uptick in cases. It has nothing to do with the city staff working very, very hard to try to manage, something to make it an even playing field for all the businesses downtown. They've been extremely helpful with the restaurants and getting them outdoor seating. Um, and this is an attempt for the businesses, the retail businesses to also participate in the outdoor part of it. Um, I wish there was a win-win for everybody. I just don't think there is right now. And I think, um, unfortunately, a lot of businesses are going to close and the ones that just do decide to stay open, um, are going to get an influx of people. But from everything I've read on Facebook, um, over the last 24 hours, I honestly do not see a lot of people attending. Um, one of the businesses downtown posted something on Facebook last night and every single comment said that they would not be attending any sort of event like this. So, um, I mean, it is definitely a good attempt on the city's part to encourage, um, retail businesses to participate like the restaurants are, but unfortunately I just think it's too soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pet?
Yes, um, for those who did, um, uh, get to, um, watch our, uh, meeting last night and for those, uh, who didn't have the opportunity to do so, it was a very vigorous discussion. Um, and I think, uh, Counselor Holmgren was, um, actually, uh, very animated about, uh, about, um, the, the worry of, uh, people without masks or, uh, the number of people congregating, et cetera. I think, uh, the discussion has been had with the, um, uh, with the board of health, uh, with, uh, the administration, et cetera. Uh, and all the provisions have been made to do this, in the safest manner possible. Uh, I agree that it is not, uh, necessarily, um, safe to do so. Uh, but, uh, in light of trying to, uh, support our businesses, I've said we would like to, uh, go forward with it and hopefully we'll have, uh, all eyes, um, on it, seeing what's going on and seeing, number one, is it a, you know, is it attended well? Is it reasonable? Is it, is there too many people? Is, whatever the issues may be, and maybe there aren't going to be anymore. Um, but, uh, I am going, I am just going to end up at the end of the day voting to support and hope that we all, uh, do well. I'm, I'm going to take the, um, the, the thought process of Karen, you know, from the, uh, from the board of health and, uh, that all the provisions we've made are the best we can and, uh, to give it a try. So that's just my, my two cents.
Thank you, Counselor Pet. Um, are there any more? Counselor, import real quick. Counselor Holmgren?
Thank you, counselors. I ended up deciding to vote yes. Uh, it was a very difficult decision for me because I want to support our chamber and I really feel that, uh, the states, uh, in this nation have been left to their own devices and this is not the time to lose support, but here we are. So everybody is just trying their best and we are all facing impossible tasks. I felt that Jill Cahill, our community development director, um, made an excellent point when she said that this particular, not a block party, shop sip and stroll, um, is the only one that was put before us and that was for a reason. They're hoping to do more, but they want to see how this one goes. So, um, I felt that they made as many provisions, uh, as Counselor Pet said, as they reasonably could. Businesses want to do this. I know that there was a lot of discussion about it, um, uh, among the businesses and the residents of the West End. Um, I, I know that there are, there's at least one business who won't participate. Um, I am, I will not attend myself. I'm, I'm very nervous, uh, for the people in my life who are at risk for this disease, but I, uh, appreciate, uh, people's conscientiousness and their willingness to try and to be safe. So just be safe, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Like I said earlier, it starts at home, starts with us. So I agree. Um, is there anybody else that would like to weigh in on this real quick? I know we normally don't do this, but, um, in this situation, I think it's, it's fitting for us to at least weigh in on this. All right, seeing none. Thank you, Counselor Gilman. We appreciate what, uh, P and D has done. I know it was a tough vote last night, but, um, you know, it's just, uh, the next one, I think we should just bump up the council for just a discussion or, or vote at the council. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, we have the next order. All right, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the first scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing 2020-020, the rezoning application 2020-002, temporary amendment to the Gloucester zoning ordinance pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, and Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.11.2 (Z), to amend Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding a new Section 5.33, temporary zoning relief to businesses during COVID-19 pandemic.
Councilor Gilman. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor. Vanessa?
Thank you, Councilor. Just really quick, you know, the initial recommendation that came from the mayor's office to move this forward, you know, was a commitment to support cities, businesses, specifically restaurants as part of our economic development and recovery strategy as we deal with COVID-19. It was a priority to help our local businesses open safely and responsibly. This temporary zoning relief, you know, removed barriers that allowed that to happen. No more than 30 businesses took advantage of it and kudos to our staff for moving the application process along very quickly. We strongly support this and hope you all will too. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There are none.
Are there any councilor questions? Seeing none. I want to close the public hearing and ask for the committee report, please. Councilor Gilman?
Thank you, Councilor. The Planning and Development Committee voted unanimously by roll call in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, and the GZO Section 1.11.2, Section E, to recommend that the city council amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding a new Section 5.33, temporary zoning relief to businesses during COVID-19 pandemic, which would allow existing businesses to add outdoor seating, display, or takeout without requiring a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals or the city council or approval of the Planning Board under Section 5.9 Site Plan Review as applicable on a temporary basis until December 2020. And I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any narrative?
No, I just want to recognize that both Bill Sanborn are still on the call and Greg Katamatory, which is very appreciated. And this was fully vetted through the Planning Board and it was unanimously supported. And we felt that they had really done a very good job supporting it. And we all watched the Planning Board meetings and then we had another presentation, which was very helpful with Greg in attendance. So, you know, it's temporary. It's until December 1, 2020. So there is like a sunset clause, so this isn't forever. But it's something just to help the businesses with this getting back to business plan, but in a very thoughtful and careful way. So we were very comfortable with how it was presented to us. So I hope fellow councilors support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the roll call vote. Counselor LeBlanc, yes? Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor on a roll call vote, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, councilors. Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2020-021, the application of EPI Dory Road LLC for a storage of ethanol at 11 Dory Road, assesses map 262, law 16, for Mass General Law Chapter 148, Section 13, and Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Section 8, Section 8-1 licenses for storing flammable and this is to be continued to July 28.
So I will open the public hearing and continue this to July 28, 2020. Next order of business, please.
Is Public Hearing 2020-010, Special City Council Permit 2020-002, Essex Avenue Number 99A, map 216, law 126, Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.8.3 standard to be applied, Section 3.1.6B, built-in heights in excess of 35 feet, Section 2.3.4 (Z), marine-related service, storage, or repair limited primarily in NMI District to commercial fishing vessels, and Section 5.5 (L) requirements, Section 5.5.2, and Section 5.5.3 in EB District. And this is to be continued to either July 28 or August 11.
So I'm going to open the public hearing and continue this until July 28, please. And the next order of business, please.
Is Public Hearing 2020-011, Special City Council Permit 2020-003, Atlantic Road Number 163, formerly part of 171, map 73, lot 41, a portion of former map 73, lot 26, Gloucester zoning ordinance, Sections 1.8.3 standard to be applied, 3.1.6B built-in heights in excess of 35 feet, 3.2.2 footnote E dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs, reduction in distance between buildings, 2.3.18 conversion to a new multifamily apartment, multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units, Section 5.7.5 special permit criteria for major project, and 1.10.1 (Z), A (Z), 1 (Z), 2 (Z), jurisdiction of the city council in the R20 low-medium density residential district. And this could be continued to July 28 or August 11.
I will open the public hearing and continue this to August 11. I just want to stagger some of these public hearings just in case, you know, I'm not saying they're going to come forward anytime soon, but at least we're going to stagger them weekly so they're not all on the same public hearing date. So, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Is other business, the city council discussion. We got in city council order 2019-034, parking at all times of motor vehicles and RVs on Western Avenue from the County Way Landing to the Avis R. Murray Tennis Courts.
Alrighty, so we had this conversation a couple of weeks ago. It's gone before the Traffic Commission. It's been to O N A a couple of times. This order was supposed to be in effect for this summer to alleviate some parking issues, some illegal things going on down the Boulevard. At this point, it's been continued out for so long. I don't see anytime soon that the Traffic Commission is going to meet. And, you know, speaking with the residents down there, everybody has a different perspective on what they want to see down there. So I am going to make a motion to withdraw this and continue. And I will resubmit this back when we try to get the Traffic Commission, when things get back to, you know, in session. Just because that, as it's written, it goes from the town landing, which is next to the tavern, all the way down to the Avis Murray Tennis Courts. And technically, we really don't control on the other side of the bridge over at the tennis courts because it's the state highway. So I'm going to make a motion to withdraw this this evening.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Counselor LeBlanc, yes? Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Motion for withdrawal passes on.
You missed Counselor Cox.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Cox?
Yes.
All right. You weren't, I got, you know, I got the roll on my phone and it was, you were at the tippity top. I'm sorry. Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, councilors. I appreciate that. When I resubmit this, I will amend it to make it a little bit more cognate with what we can control and what we can't control. All right, so next up, we have the individual councilors of the committees. And it is an update on the Magnolia Woods Oversight and Committee from Council Representative Counselor Nolan. He there, Sean?
Yeah, so there's really nothing going on. Obviously, there hasn't been any meetings to be had. The area still remains closed through the pandemic and not sure what's going to happen and when it's going to open again. So there's real no update for this tonight.
All right. Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Council's request to the mayor.
All right, so I'm going to start like we're sitting at the dais and I'm going to start over to our far right with Counselor McCarthy.
I have nothing tonight.
Counselor Memhard?
I have three quick things. So the first is a request to the mayor following up on an issue that we've discussed before. I had several calls today from Donna King on Eastern Avenue, living there between the lights at 128 and East Main Street. She's asking for us to reach out and contact directly either Bruce Horn, the dispatch manager at Gorton's, or the other people in charge at Gorton's and Americhold to communicate to their truckers to stop using Eastern Avenue as a cut through and rather use the recommended extension and East Main Street as its sign property. But at this point, we're getting multiple, multiple heavy trailers going through this residential neighborhood by Russell's Forest and what's a school zone, the Prime Trucks, the England Trailers. It's not a new issue. We've discussed this before and several councilors have gone to bat. But we just need with the mayor's office assistants to reach out to Americhold and Gorton's to try and get this addressed. Secondly, I'd just like to thank all the support from everybody dealing with the beach parking issues this past weekend, as the mayor politely describes the shit show of Sunday from Farrington Avenue to all of the neighborhood streets around Good Harbor Beach. We need to deal with this and we are dealing with it. But as we all know, our out-of-town visitors to our Gloucester beaches are extraordinarily resourceful. And when we shut off one parking area, unfortunately, they find others. And it's causing a lot of heartfelt pain in our neighborhoods. And we're working with the mayor's office, with Bob Ryan at the Traffic Commission and the Police Department to improve the signage and the designated resident-only parking areas. And it's important to know that resident-only parking is just that. You can get a sticker from the collector's office for $5. It's good for five years or use a beach pass. But folks, once we sign these neighborhood streets as resident-only parking, that means you can't have visitors parking on the street if they're not, they don't have a beach parking sticker as a resident. The third item I'd just like to comment on is that, give you all an update on the piping plovers at the beach, plovers or plovers. We're down to one surviving chick. Her name is Marshmallow, or his name is Marshmallow. He's three weeks old today and he's beginning to fly. So we lost one nest of four eggs and we lost three chicks in the last three weeks. But we have one survivor, which is about average rate, actually. And knock on wood, Marshmallow is doing great. So thank you all for your support and help.
Thank you, Scott. So unfortunately, these scoff laws that are painting out parking illegally, if you tell them to move, they're just going to find another illegal spot to park in, which is, makes it tough on our police department. But we'll try to figure this out. The mayor's got a couple of things she's working on right now and she's going to let us know very, very shortly on what we're going to be doing. All right, Counselor O'Hara?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I want to extend a thank you to the DPW for clearing trees on Hespera Ave. I think Counselor Nolan probably can give an update as far as exactly where they're headed, but I think they started on Magnolia Ave. I'd like to see that extended to ask, if we can ask the Mass DOT to do the same thing on their right of ways, is there quite a few dead trees and those trees can be extremely hazardous? I'd also like to ask Mass Highway if, I know they erect fences and noise barriers, but the wildlife is creating a major hazard on 128. There was a dead deer on 128 going southbound. I saw a deer jump in Manchester, come out of the woods, going southbound at 6:30 in the morning, jumped the barrier on Pine Street and get in Northbound Lane. It was extremely hazardous. Could be really deadly with the wildlife that maintain fences or get fences back up as they have in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cox?
That was weird timing. Okay, I just have one request to the Board of Health and that's to, Friday, the governor allowed us to be able to use our reusable bags again in stores, but over the weekend, I got a lot of feedback regarding stores saying they were not allowing reusable bags back in the store. So I would just like an opinion from the Board of Health in regards to if that's legal or not. I'm not sure. But I know they can continue to use the plastic bags for the time being, but can they refuse to fill reusable bags from home? I just, I don't know what the answer is to that.
No, that's a good, that's a good, that's a good question. I think we all need to know the answer.
A lot of people are eager to go back to pre-plastic bags. I have a ton of them. So I was just getting to my happy space with not having any plastic bags in the house. So.
Can I answer that? Because I have the same questions. I have tons of the nice cloth bags, recyclable. They can refuse because they don't know where our bags have been. If we had to protect, they said if I have to protect my employees, I know that the plastic bags are coming from someplace. They pull them out. We don't know if the person, unless they want to go to the self-bag, the self-checkout, you can do whatever you want. But if you want their baggers, they have to use theirs for now.
I get you. Thank you.
That's what, and I asked with the state, I asked CDC. So, you know, some stores do have self-checkout. So you can self-checkout or you can say, I'll bag it myself. Then you have absolutely every right to bring your own.
I get you, Mayor. That makes sense to me, too. I was, I had the concerns that Counselor Cox had, too, but that makes more sense at this point, too. Got to protect, got to protect other people. All right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pat?
Mine isn't specifically a request to the mayor. It's a comment, additional information for Counselor Memhard about the trucks. First of all, both Gorton's and Americhold have constantly been participating in working to keep the trucks off. Most of this ends up being a GPS issue, but they have to, all of their regular carriers, they do have specific instructions not to do that. Also wanted to let you know that the administration, the mayor's office, has gone all the way up to the Secretary of Transportation. And we do have some meetings scheduled and we have a number of issues that are going to be able to help when they do the renumbering of the state highways, which is coming currently within this, you know, next six months to a year. Hopefully, we're going to have some major additional signage with the correct new signs that will help in this issue. But the issue is being worked on by the administration and I am just trying to help as I, you know, work previously so much with DOT.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Holmgren?
I want to thank the police, the Gloucester police, for all of the enforcement work they did this weekend. And the perception on social media is that not enough was done. But with our police force, thanks to Counselor Memhard, who emailed the mayor and Karen Carroll and our police chief yesterday. Chief Conley came back with statistics. So he wrote, "Hi, Counselor Memhard. We issued 400..." So he wrote, "Hi, Counselor Memhard, we issued 478 parking tickets this weekend alone." And that is the most they have written for the same weekend in their computer system that he can find. So there is work being done. It is a massive amount of work. Again, as I said earlier, everybody here in Gloucester and really everywhere is facing impossible tasks. Please be patient. I will support the mayor and city administration in whatever they can do to help increase enforcement, but it's going to take time and patience, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I agree with you with the social media output. I am this close from deleting my account because of all the, the constant critiquing about everything all the time. Unfortunately, the only reason I keep, I mean fortunately, the only reason I keep it is because I communicate with friends and family, some military friends, some family that live across the country, that I interact with them through my social media outputs. But if it wasn't for that, my social media is just, it's very depressing, and I'm just trying not to look at it anymore. But that's just me. Anyway, Counselor, I mean Counselor Nolan?
Yeah, I don't have any mayor's requests. I have a bunch of thank yous out there. The DPW's been doing an excellent job with cleaning up after these weekends. A lot of complaints about trash. They work every day very hard to clean up beaches and parks. They look fabulous every day at the end of the day, before the beginning of the day. The Police Department is doing a wonderful job with their enforcements, and the administration and the DPW with the tree removal on Hesper's Ave, that was a long time coming, and it's been working out wonderful. And the start in Magnolia Ave with National Grid, it's really taken away some of the dangerous situations we've had. So it's more thank yous to a lot of people, and keep smiling.
Thank you, as I always appreciate it, Sean. Thank you. Counselor Gilman?
I've got a couple of requests. A request for a dead-end, no-turnaround sign at the end of Linwood Place at a location works as comfortable with. Just to elaborate a second on that, Linwood Place is almost directly across from Plum Cove Beach, and it's so narrow, there's no possible way you can do even a 10-point turn. So the only place that all the cars looking for parking can turn around is to go in people's driveways, and it's becoming more and more common because Plum Cove Beach has become very popular, as all the other beaches have as well. So that was a request. It's also, it's a safety request. So a dead-end, no-turnaround sign. There's one at a street very close by, so, you know, hopefully, that's not a unique sign. Next is a, just a dead-end sign at the end of Quarry Street, possibly around pole 3183 at the bottom of the hill. Quarry Street obviously has that intrigue because it's called Quarry Street, and it's, and it's a dead end. And I had some folks that went through it. They went down the whole road to try to identify signage needs, Matt Natty and Carol Murray. But I think right now, the biggest signage need is just that one at the very end to let people know that there's no access through Quarry Street to get to the quarries via car, and it is dead end. So that would be another request. Finally, kind of a big one, and although our harbor master put a really nice, very detailed sign at the state pier at Lanes Cove, we've been having continuous issues of people grilling there. And, you know, I keep telling them, you got to call a fire department, you have to call a fire department. That's what Chief Smith asked. But, you know, we're having, like a lot of divers that are there, and they're there for about six or seven hours, and they have two grills set up right near the boat landing. And just a simple sign, it'll probably get taken down, but a simple sign that just says, grills are not allowed. Because it's becoming very frequent, we even had someone on the seawall with a grill last week, and it's just, these types of issues are kind of, they're fire hazards, and it's just annoying to be setting this precedent there. And the longer we wait to kind of address it, the longer people are going to continue to think that it's okay. So, and then just kudos from the bottom of my heart to city administration and to Vanessa, DPW, the police, fire, public health. You know, the work that you did in helping with the temporary closure of the quarries was so appreciated by all the stressed-out neighbors. And also, a special shout-out to a group of 10 headed up by Lyndon Nolton Place. She went and got a group of 10 of her Lanesville friends in the 30-to-40-year-old age group, and they all went up and they tackled the quarries this weekend and did a marvelous job on Sunday. They went through the mayor's office to make sure that there was a thumbs up. I got the yellow bags, and they attacked graffiti. They attacked tons and tons of bottles and debris, and just, I'm going to start keeping track of all the people that are doing this cleanup, because at the end, I think we need a celebration, a thank you. So I've asked us to keep a running tally. But the commitment to the community and also the commitment to the city to try to get through this overpopulation of so many people in all of our open space, whether it's in Ward 1 or 5 or wherever, all over the place down at Stage 4 Park is totally appreciated. So thank you all, really appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor, for your team.
Thank you, Counselor. And I just want to, I don't have any requests, but just kudos to our acting CAO, Vanessa Krosick. You're doing a kick-ass job. We appreciate the updates. We get them every day, and we really, really appreciate that for keeping us in the loop. I'm not saying that we weren't in the loop before, but we're more in the loop now than we've ever been, so please keep that coming. I know that not only do I speak for myself, but probably the rest of the council, that we look forward to these updates every day and every other little thing that we do. Madam Mayor, we're looking forward to what you've got in store for us for the next couple of weeks, on an update with what we're going to move forward with. Bill, our building inspector for toughing up this meeting tonight, our new city clerk's office employee, Brianna Comey. Brianna, we appreciate you coming in and doing what you do. We're looking forward to some good things from you also. Who else do we have on here? Of course, well, Gary, there you are, Gary. We see you, bud. We want to make sure we say hi to you. And our ever-important city clerk, Joanne. I know that you don't get enough from us, but we love you, we appreciate what you do. I know it's super hard, not only to run the clerk's office, keep everything in order, and also try to keep this, what we're doing now, in order, trying to log on, trying to keep these meetings going, special meetings we've had lately. So we appreciate you, too, Joanne, just so it goes, it doesn't go unnoticed. We really appreciate you. With that being said, is there anything else? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Okay.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
You can hang around, Scott, if you want. Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Peck?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
All right, everybody. Thank you, we are in adjournment.